Scotty, next time.
Okay.
Okay, call to order, seven sixteen. Because we have a few new visitors here tonight who may not be aware of our policy for how these meetings are run, I just wanted to go over this. I'm not going to read the whole thing. But just so everyone's on the same page, these select board meetings are the only times the board can meet to discuss and carry out the business of the town. These meetings are not for conversation or debate with the public. The board needs to conduct the meetings with ordliness and respectful behavior. The public is welcome to attend and observe these meetings. The public may take notes and audio and video record these meetings. This is all required by Mann's Freedom of Access Act, which does not require public comment. Public comment is a courtesy which the select board wants for the good of the town. Public comment is usually the last item on the agenda. And a few things about if you've requested something to be on the board, as has happened tonight. To that, we, so, we've got a chance. They're only on agenda items specific.
Do, item two.
All comments should be courteous. Personal attacks are always out of order. Any disruptive or disorderly behavior that interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting is pro quidditch. And that should do it. All right then, I have no adjustments to the agenda. Do you either, Bill?
I thought you usually said some good things at the beginning.
Thank you, thank you, Diana. I know, I started with this. Yep, always, there's always good news to report. And the good news for this week, this meeting, is that this disbursement warrant that we'll get to in a minute is our first one produced on Trio. Yes, our municipal account software Trio. And more good news, our first, at least as far as I know, it's our first ever community building grant has been submitted. For, I'll give a little bit more about that when we get to the community building report. But I consider that very good news. All right then, number three minutes, Diana. Have you seen them?
I have, when they first came out.
Yeah, I know. It's been three weeks.
She didn't make any changes to what I sent you.
There was nothing substantive. There was a typo.
Yeah, but I changed it and then sent it to both of you.
Oh, okay. Let me look at it one more time. It hasn't been a while.
Actually, one thing that should be on here. Nothing's on there, okay. Motion to approve the minutes is written.
Where's the one? So you changed that hosing and housing?
Yeah, whatever.
I thought it was probably affordable hosing. Good. Oh, actually, this hosing there, too. We got it right there, but.
You can change it.
Okay, well, let's make it.
My time, Bill.
Sorry, you had a motion to approve the minutes? I'll second it. Further discussion?
I.
What can I ask?
Clearly, I changed it. I don't have to talk, so I'll write it down.
Should be stapled together or something. Actually, maybe even printed, for a two-page thing, just printed on the same papers, like you're signing on paper.
Yeah, I agree. Next time. So, item four. Disbursement warrant, so there it is. And I tried to get them out on Fridays, but, you know. I don't feel like signing it. Because there are just some questions and things that I'm not clear about. So is it okay if we sign it pending? Can we sign it conditionally? Or could you two sign it, but I don't sign it till I talk to Sherry?
If you.
Not to do that.
What's the question?
Well, there's some versant bills that don't make sense to me.
Well, we can just cross those out and pay them next time.
Or cross out the ones that don't make sense?
Yeah, same thing.
All right, because you don't want to hold up the other ones, you know? All right. Well, first, will you look at it first and see what you think? And like hydrants, is it put in the wrong category?
Well, that can be shifted after, that's fine. We're, no matter, you know, this is instructions to sign the check for certain bills. And if it's in the wrong category, that doesn't matter. I mean, that'll be adjusted.
So it's versant that you?
I think so, I want to look it up one more time.
Yeah, so if it's in the wrong category, don't worry about it. We're approving paying the bill. It doesn't matter if it, the accounting system needs to be adjusted.
Okay. But let me just ask you about some of these versant bills. Do you think that some with the harbor, with the power panel destroyed, why do we get a $33 bill?
Minimum charge?
Maybe, that's what some of, my minimum charge is $10 a month. What's yours?
This is commercial, maybe?
But then there's the Village Green not being used, $22. Why would that are different minimum charge?
I don't know.
And then there's the sand and salt shed, $110.
Well, that's, that's heating the loader.
I know, but it's a block here.
It's heating the loader. Joey can tell you about that.
It's keeping the engine warm.
But even you thought that was high.
It is on, it comes on, it's on a thermostat. You plug it in, it dips below, say, 32 degrees. It comes off. When it gets above a certain degree, it goes off. But we did have some cold, not much of it, but we did.
So I would, I mean, we can question these, but we should call versant and have both those temporarily disconnected. Because the panel's not working. The light on the pier is not on, right? Can't be, yeah.
Can't be with them.
Right. Yeah, so, you know, we'll save the rest of the winter season on that, just shutting it off. And the Village Green, actually, we should shut off beginning of winter. Save that money. But I don't think there's any reason to hold the warrant for it.
Yeah, no, I know, it's not huge amounts, but just.
No, I'm saying, well, okay.
Now, how about the Morton salt? That doesn't lie to you? What?
Well, that, that payment's overdue.
Part of it is.
Really paid part of it?
Well, then look at it, they did it in three sections.
Well, it's per load.
So they brought in three loads?
There's three invoices.
Brought in 120 tons. Ten, I think it was $80 a ton.
We agreed.
Actually, I think it was a little bit more than that. We went on a state bid.
I mean, as long as it.
120 tons at $8 a ton would be 9,600, and this is 11,200. It's probably more than that, but. Did we ever put these out of it?
Yeah.
Yeah. State of Maine.
We joined in with the State of Maine.
With the State DOT.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We let them do the work on that.
Okay, thank you, good. Very happy to hear that. Now, May Municipal, it's not classes, it's the annual, it's our annual dues to MMA.
Joey, it looks like there's three invoices, but four deliveries? Because one of them's like almost double.
We also have an outstanding Pelagi bill.
Yeah.
Give me that.
Well, I, I keep on getting emails for, phoning, yeah.
Well, we got three.
Right.
Four's done.
They are overdue, sorry about that.
So the one that's $5,637, what is it saying?
Not much. Yeah, I can give you more detail on that one.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, 66, what, a ton is 2,000 pounds?
Yeah, it was two deliveries. One was 66,000, one was 67,000 pounds. So three invoices, four deliveries.
Yep.
And do they go to?
They went right over town.
Right. And then they mix it.
They got it in the morning, they started putting it up that afternoon.
That's great.
We get rain coming.
Yeah. One more days like that.
Yeah.
The, was that credit card that you used at Home Depot, was that the?
Comes.
Safety comes, yeah. Did you know it just was the agenda? Correct. All right, so, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Much paper. So I'm going to ask Sherry to pause on the versant till I talk to them. Right? Or you just want to pay them and?
Um, I would just pay them and find out why there's a difference for next time. I mean, actually, you're going to call them, so ask them to temporarily halt those those meters, so we'll save a lot more money.
All right, any more talks about the disbursement warrant?
If you talk to Verizon, you've got one last mention, heat pumps. I don't know if anybody's told them. Because you can get a re, you'll get.
A different rate?
A different rate.
All done, all done.
Good.
Sherry knows, Sherry did it wrong.
Great.
Yes, we do get things. That's broken on the corner of ocean and it's like the light is actually broken off and it's shining up into the sky.
Oh, wow.
So it's probably been like that for a while. I took a picture of it, I can send it to you.
Wait, the corner of ocean and where the road damage was?
Yeah, I'm kind of trying to.
Yeah, when one of the trees grew up, really, that's, I believe, when.
So it's a power pole with a light on it, but it's shining, a light that's broken off.
It's the lighting up.
Shining up, yeah, it's like hanging from the pole, but shining up into the sky. And there's still a tree hanging on, like, Wendy's house, which I'm surprised that they left on the power pole, on the power lines.
They'll do that, and I don't know why.
If you're calling up, may as well get everything. Yeah, so, how long do you think the broken light? I saw it, I didn't take a picture, and I don't remember, but I'm sure it's.
Stuff like that, it's good to take a picture of the pole number.
The sad thing about it was when they came down to cut that pole, it was right next to it.
Wasn't in their work order.
Yeah.
All right, so do we motion to, to re-crossing off the Trio in a dose of?
Oh, yes.
Oh, thank you. Oh, you've got it. I circled it. Is that it?
Well, we have the 500 for.
No, no, it's, it was on the right hand.
Yeah, I'll get it to you.
All right then. To approve as, motion to approve as disbursement warrant 15 as amended?
So without the Trio?
Yeah. And my notes about moving, putting hydrants into our course and stuff like that. Second, further discussion? All those in favor?
What can I?
As is I, Sherry. And we even have lines to sign on now, instead of just scribbling wantonly.
Actually, if we can get a.
Did you give me back the Martin salt?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Kelly, concerning the, the count, you know, where the various things are lying in the count. If we can get the chart of accounts from Trio, you know, the current one, I can help with that.
Things like getting hydrants in the right place.
Yeah.
Yeah. She's just choosing the wrong thing. So we have it, she just didn't know it.
But it says long pond water.
Right, but she's, it's just categorized to go to, they chose the wrong code to put it to.
I'm not sure how it's set up.
Pretty sure, but she fixed it last time, did she not?
I think the same thing happened last time, but then it was a quick books warrant, right?
When we still, like, so it's, Danielle's been helping, she's been putting things in. It could just be where Danielle found that that's what was last time, and it didn't. Trying to translate the two systems, it might just not have been picked up, but.
Oh, we'll get there.
Yeah, and the original system had a lot of problems, so.
It should be in there, because Danielle's putting in all of the budget numbers, and there's a budget item for hydrants, so it should be in account for. I just remembered something. Sorry, we're not going to change the vote here, but I just want to point something out here. On the our bill for shoveling and sanding, salting here. It also mentions plowing. And I thought all the plowing here was Josh, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
He plowed the whole.
Yeah, I did see, um, so it was a situation where it wasn't taken care of.
That's something, it just jumped out at me because I'm surprised. There it is. See, he's got a price for Josh shoveling and salting, and then he's got a different price.
Right, I did see that. I was just assuming that for some reason he had to plow the parking lot.
But that's what we pay Josh for.
Right.
We're not double paying here, so.
Well, he has two months' worth of bills. Each one have a plowing?
Yep.
Okay. I guess we have to hold up on those.
He didn't come this last time until even one or two in the afternoon. And I was like, yeah, I had to call him. He didn't, I mean, we were open since eight in the morning, and it wasn't shoveled and sanded, so. And there's definitely no plowing. I'm glad to just hold up on that and.
Yes, to, you know, we approved it, but speak to them.
Sorry, I gotta find it. Oh, here we go. Okay. Good. Five, audit update. This is just a, just a quick comment that the 21, 22 fiscal year is coming along. Not ready yet, but coming along. Should have been done by previous clerk, but was not, so is being worked on by volunteer. And so as it's done, then the next one, 22, 22. And then we'll be caught up?
It'd be nice. That'll be the good news.
That'll be the good news, right. One thing that we can't, because we gave them the material back in November, and they couldn't start it until it was late January, so we're just, there's a shortage of auditors right now, and so it's.
Did they lose another one?
They have a new employee that's working there now, but overall, in the State of Maine, there's a shortage of auditors, so. So we can get the material to him pretty quickly after this audit, but it may be, it may be several months before they do that start on.
I hope we eventually catch up.
I hope so, yeah. We're trying to impress them with our speedy answers, so. Next, reports from town committees. I and Dale can report for the community building.
You do?
Will I?
I've got, I wrote something, there's some things that have to be filled in that I couldn't.
Okay.
I didn't have notes on.
Okay, well, R1.
Okay, I think as everybody knows, the community building needs attention. As with the building committee, we've moved on over some of the needs, some of the things that we see are needs. The heating system seems, fails us on regular basis, reason for it to come here tonight. The roof on the south side for Scott Simpson is in really bad shape. Windows in the back room are failing. There are two door jams that need to be replaced, who don't know what the damage is behind them. There's some damaged clapboard around the house. Exterior needs to be painted. There's some talk of redoing the back room into maybe office space or meeting space. That room has a, a, it's, the ceilings need to be insulated. There is carpet on the floor and according to Rob underneath it is asbestos piles, which will need to be dealt with. The carpet, we need, if we do, if we do any remodeling, there's lighting that's going to have to be done. As far as what we have accomplished at this point, the heating system, we've had three contractors in there. Two of them have been going to give us prices on replacing. The third one, I understand, came in and said, the system's really not this old, in that old, and that he feels that it can be repaired. His suggestion was, as I understand it, was to go ahead and repair the system that we have, and then add heat pumps kind of as a backup system, also giving us, giving us air conditioning. The only situation I think with that is that if we try to get rebates, it may be a problem if we don't shut the main system down. I read it at one point, and I think that's something that I have read. The roof, talked to the town manager in Southwest Harbor. They had a company called Andy's Home Improvement come in and do theirs. They use a bunch of Brazilians, and I will tell you, I've worked with that clientele before. They come, they work, and they leave, and they do a good job. So if we can get them, I put a call into them, I've not got a call back. It looks like they're from Massachusetts, so whether they come up this far or not, I don't know. Let's see. Windows and, windows and doors, I talked to Beau Parker. He is at least a year out. He's a small crew. Certainly can't do, doesn't have any desire to do the roof. But he said he wouldn't, would look at it, and particularly if we had little things that had to be done. When I talked to him, I thought that we still had the, had the hole in the shingles on the community building, and understand that that has been taken care of, so we're not in an emergency situation there. Only has a gentleman by the name Scott Simpson that she really likes. We'll try to get ahold of him to see if he will come and take a look and, and give us an idea, give us at least a budget price on, on replacing the windows, taking care of the clapboard, and whatever we want to have done in the inside. Insulating, the thought is that we need to better the insulation for both the main building and the, yeah, main building, the back room, we do have an estimate on that, and there were a couple estimates, but somewhere around $8,000. Correct me on these numbers if you're wrong.
No, Mark, I think.
I think that that was correct. And then, okay, and then the asbestos removal again was about $8,000, if I memory serves me correctly. What we, what I need, or any recommendations on a painter and electrician? Now, those are the two that I really don't have anything, anything for. Darla has been working, you've already mentioned that, of trying to get some financial help. AARP, I think is the one that she has turned in. And then the other one, Hancock County Planning, isn't that the second?
Right, that was that, too, but, yeah, the third one. We haven't turned in the AARP one yet. It's a challenge granted to March 6th, but we have a good start on that.
And it's kind of the focus of what, what we're kind of basing these requests for help is to turn the community building into a warming center. I think we tried to figure it out the other day. We're guessing that the population in Surranta is two-thirds retirement age, over retirement age. So we feel that having a warming center would be something that would be positive, and it kind of helps us, gives us a reason other than trying to save a historic building to us. Trying to get some, get some help. And we want, and we want the building to possibly attract small events, yeah, well, the small groups of renters, maybe small weddings, maybe small family gatherings, something to maybe give us a little bit of, a little bit of income. Missed anything?
That's great, thank you, thank you. I can just say that you got the three bits for the quotes, rather, for the asbestos.
Yes.
Which is wonderful, and we have three, got three for the insulation, and, and a grant, a grant that has gone in was Gianna volunteered and wrote it using the, I think it was almost 9,000. Code, evidently we all like that, like that. And no guarantees, but that's done, and then the next, we're working on the AARP one, which could be as much as $50,000, like we were really lucky. Like, we were really lucky. And then the third one is the, um, is Community Resilience Grant, but that's not really for the community building. That's gonna be stuff like seawalls and protecting our roads and stuff like that. And that one, we're working with Hancock County. And that is the Hancock County Planning Commission. Yeah, we're getting quotes on roofing, painting, stuff like that.
The asbestos quotes, how do they differ?
They're all very close as far, as far as the pricing.
Square footage.
One, uh, there was one out of TAF that I just basically gave him the information that you had on your quote. I had him give me an estimate based on that rather than having to run all the way up here.
Sure.
Because we're at a point where we're trying to get budget numbers, not necessarily firm numbers. If we get them, if we're ready to do it, we've got money available, then we can ask for actual, actual quotes.
Thank you.
I have a question. The back room at the schoolhouse, what is that used for now?
Half of it's, half of it's fire panel.
Well, um, a while ago, the, the, the community building committee, uh, agreed with a plan to take, um, two windows worth, I mean, we, about a third, um, and establish it as, um, an office for the, the fire department. So two windows were installed, door was installed, and that project, um, didn't go any further because of the asbestos flooring. I had contract to come in to test the flooring, and yes, it is asbestos. It's nine-inch, um, asbestos tiles. But also I spoke to Scott Simpson about, uh, ripping out all the, the wall with all the windows and he also said the door is in bad shape and just removing the steam, uh, piping and rebuilding that as a two-by-six wall. So we, we gain insulation, we have new windows, uh, and that'd be a, a big plus. And the last thing would be a partition, uh, wall to separate the rest of the room from, uh, from the, the office.
I also talked to Scott actually today, because he's doing some work for me, and, and he's not at all interested in the roofing project and really recommend it. We just get a roofing company to do that, but he is interested in that wall.
Yeah, I did ask him for a quote, but it was a low priority.
Yeah, yeah.
A few years ago.
And, yeah, and he also said he, the summer would be, you know, he might, he'd have more time this summer, but he would, he would be interested in getting on that particular part.
The only thing there is that we really need some kind of a number, if, if even a budget number, so we know what we're.
Yeah, if you could work on a budget sooner than later.
Yeah, yes.
I mean, to answer Debbie's question, I think what the community building committee envisions is that that space will be a nicer meeting space for all board and committee meetings, so it will be a meeting space that's more easily heated. Very, um, the meetings are going on here unless that door's closed, it's very loud in the office, so that's, depending for them. One of their computers is in here, so that doesn't allow them to be working there when we have meetings, so they really see that. Smaller, bigger than this space, but smaller than the high-ceilinged open space, which has, that was six, been a really good, you know, meeting space for.
Like this. You can be there tonight, it's pretty much more.
Yeah, removing that, the blackboard, um, and, and still losing, you know, the, the two windows in the back, it'll still be like four times, at least four times the size of this.
Yeah, so anybody who wants to come to a community building meeting, you don't have to be a, a member of the committee, you could be a friend or an interested party. We meet the first Monday of every month, uh, ten o'clock. So, yeah, that would be good. And thanks, Dale. Um, PV, finally.
We submitted a draft, uh, response to the state's Housing Opportunity Act, which, where we, if we do not respond, the state will institute, um, with land use requirement changes. So, uh, Mike Gerbler, CEO in conjunction with the state, um, came up with a, uh, draft ordinance which meets Sorento's particular requirements under the state law. And it's been reviewed by the attorney and there is a public hearing on the twenty-eighth, I believe.
Right here.
It'll be the.
It's gotta go in the paper.
I don't, I don't know for sure.
I think it's on the, yes, we planned for the twenty-eighth. I talked to Sher about getting it in.
One thought I had about that was, um, has a planning board thought about the idea of requiring, um, parking spaces for people who add accessory drawing?
Actually, the state law, um, says that you don't have to add parking spaces.
Well, you don't have to, but we can require it if, if parking on the road is a problem.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not certain. Uncertainty issues, our hands are, are tied by state law. I think that, um, this state law says that you, you can't require additional parking spaces, but I, I'll review that.
Yeah, please check.
We didn't specifically address that, I might, if I recall, whether it's, uh, within our ordinance.
All right, thanks, Tom. CP is Comprehensive Plan and they asked me to let everyone know about the community baked bean lunch party, meeting. Lunch and discussion, really. Mark, this is March tenth, twelve noon, open to all. What do you? Baked beans, brown bread and hot dogs. It's Sunday, Sunday, March tenth, twelve noon, open to all, Sorento residents, taxpayers. It is for a community get-together and then a discussion about the visioning, which is Sorento moving forward.
Yes.
You knew that.
No, I'm smiling because you mentioned the word visioning, which turns us all confused.
Oh, sorry.
Vision, what's visioning?
Yeah, what's visioning?
That's why we have moving forward instead of visioning.
Sorry, sorry. So please mark your calendars, Sunday, March twen, March tenth, twelve o'clock, Sorento Moving Forward.
Moving forward, section.
Is this?
Lunch and discussion.
In any way connected with Comprehensive Plan?
It is, I just said. This is Comprehensive Plan Report.
Report, okay.
That they asked me to give because I don't think there's anyone here from the committee. Is there anyone on Zoom who wants to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I'm, uh, Trina Wellman, and, um, thank you, Hilly, for raising this for us because this is really critical and we hope everybody will come and participate. Have a hot dog and some baked beans and, um, then we're just gonna have a con, you know, a conversation about, you know, where Sorento thinks it needs to be in the future. Thank you.
Moving forward, great name. FD, Fire Department.
Yeah.
Updates for us?
Yeah, I went back and I got all of last month's calls in this month. We had five calls in from three, three over in Sullivan, and they ranged from three on the power lines, fire lines. We had a kitchen fire slash burnt food the other night on East Side Road.
That was serious.
Yeah, and, uh, we've had, uh, some, uh, alarms for gas, uh, gas alarms going off and stuff because of the power being out, alarms being screwed up. Um, we've had three mutual aid calls, the Sullivan in January, uh, tire accident. We had a possible structural fire that turned out to be cooking error. And, uh, vehicle fire. And the other night, we had a roll to Sullivan on a fire, just a fire line. But those are the calls that we've had in January and so far in February.
Wow.
Um, just so you know, I'm kind of proud to speak up. My daughter Casey, uh, she graduated Saturday and, uh, they, she graduated with the, uh, state instructors upon emergency vehicle driving.
Great.
So she has been through the obstacle course.
Wow.
And taken a class on that, and she starts in March for the, on the, uh, to go through the Scudick, um, fire academy.
Great.
Wow, good.
And there's, there's three other, three other gentlemen that's on with the panel that has also gone through the driving and, uh, Will Packer was one, Papa Mitchell and Jared. Um, they all graduated for the driving and, uh, I've got, I believe, three that's going to the Scudick, uh, fire academy.
Great.
I didn't know there was a Scudick.
They just started it this year. They got a bunch of state instructors. And, uh, they're hoping that they, they can.
So a lot closer.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great. Good news. Uh, I didn't put roads, uh, specifically for reports, but I just want, since you are. The intersection, when you come into Sorento, you know, east side, west side, it's all, we're losing road there.
Well, that, that was a good ops moment there, I'd say, with a cloud.
I was gonna say, that was a cloud.
Yeah, it was.
I was behind the cloud on that one.
Oh, boy.
I have to go to work, DOT for that, because that whole intersection right there encompasses DOT. So we will get there. But it's not, it's not town, that, that is DOT.
Okay.
Hang to the far left. Go up the hill.
Yeah, yeah, and then there's a place downtown of the old firehouse that, uh, that over, it's like, I don't know if it's continuing.
That's gonna be after the cold weather, so we can get in there with all the storm and everything. It's still just making a sinkhole right there.
Just that the, the edge is broken off, so there's very little.
It's going underneath.
Running road at this point, which is hard because it's a. As long as you know about it.
Yep.
Okay, and then RSU is a school and I did not get anything. I don't have a quote. So, next, okay, my policy. We're, we're not gonna do other policies and, uh, we started this last time and I'm not ready actually to vote on it, but if you guys are desperate, we are.
I'm not desperate, but it looks good.
Yeah.
Good start.
Yeah. Does it look like this?
Well, I have the one with red.
I like, I got it redone this way, and I, boy, I like that much better.
All right, well. But I'm not sure yours has Rick Milton's comments.
No, this is just part of it. That, this is how he wanted it.
Well, I mean, this is, I thought this was the latest, right?
Does it have Rick Milton and, and are there things?
Oh, yeah.
Things crossed out on page?
No, I have the one with his.
On page five, do you have emergency procurements and things?
This is where they change.
Yeah, okay.
But, all right.
Well, this is just a part.
Actually, I think, I think it'd be good to have version numbers in title. But also, uh, it mentions, um, a PO system, so I think we need to do that in parallel. A PO, purchase or system.
Yeah.
So we need to have that in place when this gets approved.
So is that a whole separate policy?
Uh, no, it can be part of it, but just, you know, physically have to do it.
All right, well, let's look these over. We only have two weeks now to our next, so let's look these over and, and hopefully we can vote on it, um, next meeting.
Okay.
That was Tom. So.
My problem with it is that it messes you in all these little details, so that if you want to do something, you can never figure out what you're gonna do, because you're gonna look, oh, yeah, is it this or this or this, and I think some of them are unnecessary.
So you think there's too much, um, detail?
I do.
All right, well, uh, write it as you would like it to be.
There you go.
And then we will, we'll load on it. It's okay. You might win, who knows? Um, item eight, road repairs phases one and two. So phase one, which is called the initial repair, have been, is done. Ocean Ave and the town pier, and I, I believe yesterday they poured the town, back there. I saw them before they poured, but now I haven't seen it finished.
I haven't either.
Yeah. Haven't gotten the bill yet, but we, we know what it is.
Yeah, it was reasonable.
Yeah, it was reasonable, although I'm not sure what, how we're gonna pay for it.
I have, uh, town roads.
It's not in the budget, town roads.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Or town repairs, either one. They're, they're general.
Okay.
You know, general, uh, accounts.
You know, I think that, uh, Kelly, we, everybody who needs to know that phase two won't be done till after the fall.
Well, yeah, I asked, um, oh, the guy, the nice guy who came in the other day. Oh, remember? Yeah, Eaton.
Yeah.
Was a paver guy, gave us the card. He's interesting. He didn't even know that we were.
He does some for Jordans.
Oh, okay. But he wants to.
And he's done work for us before.
Okay.
I've been out there.
Okay.
He does work for Jordans, but how's that compared to Jordans paying him to do it?
I don't know how that works. I do know Eaton did work for us and, uh, it was very, well, we see.
Anyway, I said, yeah, damn, like, you don't pave in the winter, right? And, and, you know, maybe the end of March, April, is that something that, right? Something like that, but we do.
Well, this year, who knows?
Well, you want the ground to be settled.
Exactly.
As well as warm.
But, uh, so two things. We need to get bids. We've got one from Jordan, although they may have to re, relook again.
Well, one thing to consider is you don't really want to pave until the shorefront is, uh, redone, uh, the way you want it.
Everything on Ocean Avenue?
No, the areas are really, you know, hard hit.
We start with Dome's Point.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, how about Cedar?
Has the other one on the other?
Yeah, so, so we'll see, we'll see what happens with, with, um, you know, the state's appeal to federal government for aid and see what happens, you know, how we have to apply for that and so forth. Because.
But shouldn't we still be looking at, looking for this? Or just for the paving part?
Sure. I'm, I'm just saying it'd be good to, you know, do all the work at once as opposed to, uh, paving the area and then working near the road edge if we change things.
Well, once you get that thing, you don't want the excavators and dump trucks hauling all of that pavement.
Right.
So you want to rebuild the shoreline before we pave?
We wanted, we want to make a decision what we're doing with it before we pave.
And if we get this third draft, Community Resilience, one, do you remember what the maximum? But if you can, and, and they're helping us write this, thank God.
Good.
Above my pay grade.
We're free. No, they're, they're writing it for free. We don't have to pay here, from Hancock County.
Yeah.
Exactly, for free.
Well, that's great.
Because they're getting paid by somebody else.
That's the way it should work. Actually, the Comprehensive Plan, the, the, the previous one, the state actually gave us a grant for it.
And so we have this, um, so if we can, with them, you know, figure out, you know, what do we want, how are we, are we gonna raise the seawall? Are we gonna do that idea about sloping the, you know, sloping the rocks or the river, you know, so, so we don't have this. This is what I don't want. I don't want this. I want this.
It's gonna be slow.
Yeah.
You're gonna remember all them waves that, it ain't the waves coming in that's pushing, it's when the waves go out, it's taking the stuff with it.
Well.
You got, you got an action, you got an action, when it comes in, it'll start it rocking. Then when the, the force of the water going back, it will pull it back.
Another aspect of it is the fact that, you know, the waves undermine what's there.
Exactly.
Um, and as that collapses, everything's gone. Um and as that collapses, everything's gone.
Yeah, yeah, and it's interesting to see. See what happened to Gambles around Dome's Point. Seen that?
Um.
Seawall?
Hmm, I thought it did pretty well.
It did pretty well, but considering what it is, I thought it would.
I didn't see any damage to it.
Well, this the ground of it's it's cracking. It's.
I was gonna say it's cracking and the subsidence behind the wall. It didn't didn't uh it saved them this time, but it may not next.
So you're saying the wall is there, but the soil is washing away?
Oh, no.
Yeah. One thing that may help, Eva, uh now, right now, I don't remember the name of it. It's the same part that I mentioned to you a while back about that planning, the planning grant. And in the past, they required the towns to um put up a certain amount. But when I spoke to the woman, they don't have a deadline right now because of all the stuff that's happened. Um and they're also considering whether they would actually require the down to put out a certain amount of funding as well. But that's something when we speak to Hancock County planning, because they also know, because she couldn't tell me because they haven't made any decisions about. Applications being available, any of that stuff yet, but it'll assume. But having a firm or somebody that could actually. Do the planning and really not just, you know, hire someone and not have a good plan, I think if we can get it other diagram, it'll be great.
Well, another another thing we ought to look at is on some of that stuff, get the Army Corps of Engineers involved. And then you could be possible, possibly, I cause I know they they did. They've done this in the past. The CB's there for the Army National Guard. That may be something we could see if we could put on their work list because they could come in and they are looking for stuff to do.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure they have plenty of stuff.
Yeah, especially.
But I mean, that is, we can look into.
Okay. Well, there's more to go here, yes.
The down on Dome's Point with the roads, you know, just past the houses and stuff. The town agreed and paid for rebuilding when the granite slabs were there and we had the rail. And that falls on the town to replace that.
You mean the steps going to Isaac Beach?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That and that was back in Louis Sutherland's era and beyond.
Oh, shoot, with that.
So it is the town's responsibility to slide them back into place and put we had just one rail, so you can carry your kayaks down and hang on.
Before we do that. And everything, I wanna replace a bike going across.
Oh, you think? Well, one's out, one's running.
Yeah. So I mean, that's gonna be done. That's.
That's one of many areas, yeah.
Know that that's.
Sure.
Town's responsibility and.
Yeah.
Cause we really fought for that.
Yes, I love that, but would that fall under our property penalty?
I don't know where, how.
Um, we can try.
Cause just along that line, I did file the claim.
Yeah.
For us, you're welcome, for but I only did it for the. Wind blown off storm shingles.
Yeah.
Which has been fixed for the power.
The panel.
Panel, and I asked Lou and he thought, you know, I said, how much do we ask for? And he said three thousand.
Um, so we also have the teak bench.
And the teak bench, I put in five hundred.
You're mine.
Um. Uh because we googled what's a teak bench. So just so you know, I've done I've done that much, but um if you want me to put those, does that?
So I don't know where it goes, but I have one.
You can ask them about. Um you might as well ask them about the various places along the road's edge.
Yeah, all that, because they they say just send pictures and then either they'll say yes or no, I guess.
Well, you know, I'll send you. I'll give you plenty of pictures. I can give you the pictures from your report.
Yeah, I have one more one more thing. Did I see somewhere that there was talk of putting five parking places along there?
Not from us.
I I was gonna say, somebody had asked me to ask and I said, you're likely to get three cars there. I said, you are not gonna get five with that bank rooting like it. You're gonna be in the bog with them. So it's it's nothing that y'all were doing. It was just another group that was talking about, oh, we need to do.
Apparently.
Five parking places. And I said, no, but you can't get five. Not and get by with a car. You're gonna be in the bog on the other side.
Well, I I um Susan Derry did bring this up a while ago.
I I wasn't gonna say.
I might as well. Um and she also mentioned that it was in the last comprehensive plan, which I didn't remember. Um doesn't mean that we're bound to it, but um two thoughts in that. One, it would be substantial expense to fill in the bog.
Oh, yeah.
Um, you know, i- if indeed, you know, we have enough.
And you couldn't fill it in with adding more pipe.
Space there.
It's all boiling springs.
Plus, that that beach gets crowded pretty quickly.
Yes.
And encouraging more use of it isn't really.
On my sister's lawn, parking cars on her grass and.
I mean, I I think you're there's a loss of quality of that space if we encourage too much use.
But I think getting the steps fixed is a.
Oh, you have a question over there?
If you're gonna think about that bog, you probably know a lot more about than I do, but if you're going into going into something that's considered wetlands, you're gonna have.
You got permits, DEP.
Will they give it?
Maybe, maybe not.
Ah, it's fifty fifty.
Okay.
It's tricky.
There are problems to it, yeah.
The the thing is, you gotta research landowners, get landowners permission.
It's tricky.
Can be quite complicated. And Hillary, while we're on the roads things, I have sent you some information that I wanted to talk a little bit about. Do you wanna do it now or do you wanna wait till public comments?
I I didn't get information about roads.
No, I I mentioned there was a situation, but anyway, I'll wait.
No, let's wait, please. Um. I know. Have any more thoughts about roads and shoreline right now?
Well, it's continuing, yeah.
I'm afraid it's gonna be the rest of our lives. I can see storms like this.
It'll be on every agenda.
Wonderful, yeah, every day. Okay, Saturday, Singer's Shoreland Plan volunteer. I put this here because last time we talked about that Mike hadn't officially signed off on the plan. And then he did, and he said, he wrote me and said, because this is town property. He thinks it's important to give all the taxpayers a chance to weigh in on it. So I was thinking if we had a. A site visit on a could done have to be Saturday, could be Sunday, but soon, like this weekend. To um meet and have people look at it.
Well, I agree. I also spoke to um the forester and she is available to come Saturday.
And this is their forester, Teresa?
This is the forester uh that the singers uh hired for the plan.
Okay.
But we would hire her um to help with with this site visit.
Um, okay.
She wrote a very good description, which explains what it does and what it doesn't do. I mean, seeing it doesn't tell you the effect, the way, anyway, so we should put that in the town office so that anyone can read it.
It is, and people have been coming in to read it.
It's been there for three weeks, I think, since our last.
Yeah.
Meeting, and then and here's her the update from the board here.
One um possible outcome from this meeting is uh to possibly flag some more trees to save. Because any any tree, except for um zone one, any trees that aren't flagged can possibly be cut.
Right, and that's concerning to a lot of people, because then we don't know.
Right. I mean, there is a balance to to cut some trees, let some light in so that what's there gets healthier. Um but, you know, I think it would be good.
I thought they specified exactly to.
No, they specified the ones to save and they specified the ones that are definitely being cut.
Okay.
But anything not marked has the option of being cut. That's the way I understand it.
And and actually, the red flags are not saving as much as it's designated the zones.
True. All right, so this you she will come?
So I can make a motion that we approve hiring um. I'm figuring out your name now. Teresa Davis.
Teresa.
To come Saturday. Um it would be um maximum of one hour on site and with travel, it'd be hundred forty hours.
Hundred forty hours, the one hour, and so do you care if it's Saturday, Sunday, or what?
I, since I spoke to her and she's available Saturday.
Okay.
Uh I would prefer Saturday.
Saturday, okay.
What Saturday?
This coming Saturday.
But we don't have a definite time.
We don't have a time. We can set a time. She was open Saturday.
Well, what does the board prefer, morning, afternoon? Where's she coming from? How far?
Uh I think.
Otis, this address is Otis. Where is Otis?
Give some of them and not from that, oh, no.
Yeah. It's not that close.
What area are you talking about surveying?
So near where John Singer's house is?
So Ocean Avenue, you go past the Village Green, heading west, water on your left.
So that's town land?
Yes.
And that's why this is.
Yeah, so there's there's an area that. There's there's an area that that um.
Well.
Has plastic on on some trees and then beyond that is this area.
Ribbons.
Uh with with blue blue ribbons to save trees and red ribbons designate the zones.
Hillary, can I add a comment here?
This is John.
Yes, um. In terms of the flagging. The trees that are gonna remain are all flagged in blue, but all of the trees that are gonna be cut are flagged in red. So when you look at that area, it's very easy to see which trees are gonna be cut because they're all flagged in red.
What are the ones that are flagged? But if they're not flagged at all. Don't they have the option of being cut?
Uh. Yes, that's true, but in in terms of what we are requesting approval for, it's only those trees that are flagged in red. So. It's pretty pretty clear as you walk by.
And so everyone is welcome to come. It's going to be Saturday. But we haven't set a time, so as soon as we get a time. We'll put on the Facebook.
Well, what time do you want to set? If you said, yeah.
If I know, okay. If she's available, how about ten?
Okay.
Ten AM. The Saturday.
So I will call you.
Or like picking a loser or anything?
No, no, don't do that.
No, you'll see that's that's Tuesday.
Is that nice? Oh, wow, okay. Uh and just another update here, Steve. I think I sent you guys this. Steve Schla was in town and, you know, he has decked life experience of. Forestry and stuff, although he's not a licensed forester, but he looked at it and and had some thoughts. So.
What date was that email?
Share this with Teresa and she what date was.
You said you sent you forward that email to us?
I did forward it to you, yeah.
What date was that?
Well, I got it on the fourth.
We went, well.
So I go forward it to you that night or the next day?
Would you wanna put that in the town office so we could see what he said?
Yes. There's not much time, but.
Well, he he was happy with it.
Well, in general, but you know, he was concerned that he thought lopping off limbs rather than taking down a whole tree.
Yeah, yeah.
He thought about about topping trees to make certain trees to make more reddish, but the most. He did say his final words were stabilizing the topsoil as recommended in the plan. Teresa, right? Is important, but will mean nothing if the town allows a shoreline to be undercut by ocean waves, which it really was that last time. My sense of that shoreline is that some selectively placed riprap between natural ledge outcroppings would go a long way towards strengthening the base of Ocean Avenue.
Pin to ledge.
But.
Wait, we have to.
Pin to ledge. In other words.
Can you pin it?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, um good anchor stones pinned to ledge.
Yep.
And when the last of those last summer.
Depends how big the stones are.
Yeah, the last two, those that my family has down there on Dome's Point, the rocks, there was riprap. One side of the property down and all these stones put on top of them, you know.
Yeah, sure.
While the stones are out to sea.
Oh, they're really?
Flapping in the breeze, so it.
Oh, boy. Yep.
What we need to do is find the old quarry, the old timeless cops, the creepy the creepy slabs.
Yeah, although some of those got tossed and moved.
No matter what you do, unless you pin it, like Rob said, it's gonna take a little swim.
I forgot the guy, uh the company who did the the outfall. But, you know, they have a barge um company that does work from from the shoreside. And he told me there was one um. One riprap section that they worked on where they actually pin the the anchor stones and the storm just lifted everything up.
I also put in volunteer cleanup because I was thinking if a lot of people were um. Gathering anyway to look at this, then they could walk vault over to the greens and uh. He's a raking.
Um. Well, I was thinking more of warmer weather when when things aren't necessarily frozen.
Well, I might bring a rake anyway, if anyone wants to join me. There's a lot of gravel got thrown up on the green that needs to go back. To the beach, but yeah, good point. Doesn't have to be this Saturday. One word at a time, I guess. Okay, item ten, unless there's anything else more on this. Item ten, Clay asked me to put property assessing and property tax records on the agenda, and here it is.
Okay, thank you very much. Um. As I moved into town, there's been a lot of discussion. I've been watching the tax books and you as select people, I I'm wondering. Hillary, this I'm not sure this could even apply to you, but have you ever assessed your own property?
No.
Okay.
I'm not qualified, for one thing.
Diane, how about you? Have you ever assessed your own property? Because you have, you know, legally you possibly could.
I've looked at the assessment.
Okay, well, how about you? Have you ever assessed your own property?
Yeah.
You never have?
Nope. No, we we have an assessing agent uh to do that work.
All right, uh I looked up the last since basically on all three. Uh basically since two thousand and fourteen. And it made it pretty difficult because you have to have the old town book records. It's not on the website. It's not anything that you can find easily, okay? And I was just curious.
Well, I I sent you the website uh that the town that the state actually has the annual reports.
When did you send that to me? I don't seem to be able to find it in my email.
After Mark Perry responded to your email.
I got it.
Yeah, okay, and I need I need to.
I can send it again if you want.
Uh would you please? But uh you you bought a piece of property, shoreline property for three thousand dollars, correct?
It's not shorefront.
It's not shorefront?
No, it was.
It's listed in shore, it's shorefront.
It's shorefront lot, but it's adding uh it was it was, well, the full story is. The neighbor to the north of. Andrew Abbott, um his road was actually on our property. And then the road we put in was on Beth Clark's property and um so. To make uh to adjust things, uh the road was moved on the north side and on the south side, we purchased property from. From Beth Clark's mother, uh because our road was there.
Well, uh I wouldn't buy what the town report said, and it was listed, I'm pretty sure, as uh shorefront, but. Uh has that property gained in value a great deal over the times that you've had it? I mean, even though it's not shorefront, it has access, must have access to shore.
It's just part of the property. It's not a separate lot that's buildable. It's just.
Oh, it's not buildable?
No, it's um. Well, I mean, you can look at the tax maps, but it's twenty five feet by um one hundred and fifty feet and the other one's twenty five feet by um one fifty or one twenty five or something.
Well, I thank you for clearing that up for me, okay? So and I guess the reason I'm asking this to bring up the point this. That I think that it's really proper that the town have a problem, you know, a certified certified assessor of properties.
We do.
We do.
And you do. And you do now.
Now, your vote's had.
Since when?
Well, I've been in town 35 years. We've had one with Mark Dixon for 34 of those years. And now it's Mark Perry.
So Mark Perry is licensed certified and he's going to carry on now for however long. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And he told me, I invited him to be on the Zoom tonight so you could directly ask him questions, but he was in Augusta driving.
No, I'll take your word for it. I mean, you know, I just wanted to know because it's.
He did say, any questions, make sure people have my email, Down East Assessing at gmail dot com.
Would you just forward that to me?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. And I don't know if you are aware of this.
It's in the annual report?
Yep.
This year's?
There's a crate of them on the floor there. Clay, I don't know if you're aware of this because I didn't understand it for years. And that, I'll just, for everyone's edification, under main law, a municipality has three options for assigning responsibility to assess property taxes. It may use a separate elected board of assessors, a single appointed assessor, or the select board may act as the board of assessors. And that's sort of the default thing. If you don't have the others, that's what you get. And that's what we have done forever. Yeah, yeah. If we want to change this for any reason, you have to, it has to be at a town meeting, you have to, I don't know, 90 days, there's a whole thing about it. But so we are officially the board of assessors. However, we hire an independent contractor who is called an assessor's agent. He assists the assessors by making recommendations on valuation, assessment, and other property tax matters. Given the technical nature of property tax laws and valuation methodologies, an assessor's agent can be an extremely valuable resource for the assessors. Yeah, trust me, you don't want us doing this. And we don't want to, we do not want to do this. So we hire a person as we have forever, as I know. So however, the assessor's agent has no legal authority to sign the tax commitment warrant, the commitment papers and stuff. That's why, and it says we're the board of assessors. I mean, we are.
Yep.
But we, he, the agent, Mark, he can't grant tax exemptions, abatements to tree growth, open space, stuff like that. Only the board can do that. However, it's the whole board.
Yes.
So if you think one of us is somehow cheating on our assessments or our taxes, it would be very hard to do that because it's the whole board that has.
Yes, and I understand that. And I hope you understand, I'm supporting you on that, okay?
But please ask Mark, he said, absolutely.
I will probably have a conversation sometime tomorrow. I'm not going to call him when I get home.
Right. All right. Then, moving onward. Item 11, town here power pole. So we lost the power panel due to saltwater.
Right, so so saltwater actually got into the panel, destroyed it. Lou Sutherland inquired about raising the panel, but we can't raise it because it's a limitation how high we can put it.
Limitation from who?
Power company.
Power company.
In other words.
Versant.
Versant.
Well, there's.
Um, anyway.
No, okay, there's a reason.
So the thought is, well, let's move the pole. And I've looked into this before we decided to just continue using that pole. There's really no good place to put it. Because if you put it you know, more onshore and you have an overhead line to it, it's quite close to the flagpole and you need to be able to lower the flagpole for maintenance. So everything, land side of the flagpole is no good. And I think we're really looking at the necessity of going underground and putting the panel on the the shelter. Where, opposite where the payphone used to be.
Right.
And then go underground, you know.
To there.
And I'm sure a lot of people would be, except for the expense, a lot of people would like to see losing the line, yeah.
Yeah, but look at it, but the expense. And what if there's ledge? How do you go underground?
It doesn't have to be deep. And if it's shallow, you can just put some cement on top to protect the conduit.
Well, then, where do we go from here?
Get quotes.
Is that something you can do?
Sure. I might have to line people up, but ask them to work with you during the day.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, if you can give me some names and then.
Okay.
So you're talking about bearing the lawn to the what do they call it, the shelter?
I mean, one possibility is to work on the ditch and get conduit in for electrician to wire it to save some money, but we'll see.
I gotta go down and look at this again because I can't visualize. I can see the shelter, but I can't, I don't even remember where it was.
It it's in the ledge, off the hillside.
Does $3,000 sound right for that?
Sure.
Do you think?
Well, for replacing that panel.
Right.
And that'll, that'll, we'll see how it compares to actually putting it underground. But
Right, well, exactly.
I mean, for one thing, putting underground, moving the pole, well, we can't really utilize that pole. It's really falling apart. And it was questionable. So we'd have to put a new pole in, and poles are like $1,000 now. So compare that to underground wire. You know, that'll, that'll contribute to the underground.
And how, what's the distance it would have to go underground?
It's not bad. It's from the pole right there.
Yeah, it's not bad.
There's no thing that way if you have to put a new pole in down there.
Yeah.
It's all edge.
Well, I know.
So you're gonna be saying the blasting.
Right, so.
There's ledge there.
So $1,000 of pole, not including insulation.
But also blasting next to your neighbors is, well, you can, you can close off someone's well.
Yeah.
With blasting.
Yeah.
By mistake. I don't think Candy or Steel would like that very much. All right. All right. So any more thoughts about this?
Yep.
We're just gonna try to get quotes. Carry on. When does this have to be up and running again?
Well, before the floats get put in.
And when's that? May?
Yeah.
Yeah.
From the first to the 15th.
We're still practically here. It's right around the corner. I feel the days are just flying by. All right, then. Part ordinance I just put because of the roadwork and the occasionally we do get snow and.
Less and less.
We do, less and less, true, but still, we do have this ordinance and it does say that we're not supposed to park on the roads and yet some people do.
Well, do we ignore it?
After you talked to them, they moved off. But then I noticed it was on the road again, but that's because the snow was plowed, so they couldn't park off the road. In other words, they did what you wanted until they couldn't.
Yeah.
So, anyway, this.
Is this an annual problem?
No, really, because Josh thinks he can't.
Oh, I have to do that?
He has big plow truck. It will casual.
Well, does he warn them before?
Yes, he pushes it pretty good.
Yeah, oh. Right, thank you. Didn't know that.
And when he has a problem, he tells me.
And you're on it. All right. Does anyone, so they just get warned and then they move their truck?
Usually when they find out that if we told it, they pay for it.
Yeah.
There's no question.
That's in the ordinance.
Was there a problem and that's why we put the ordinance? I mean.
What it was years ago, when they done this, they didn't have any place for cars to park like fishermen do have now. People would just duck hens especially. Come in, dump the decorating on the road and go ducking. So Buddy had that in.
In downtown Sorrento, they would duck down.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, on the shore.
All right, so we will just carry on.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Seems like it's not a big problem.
All right, and if it is.
We'll take it.
You're on it. All right then. That was easy. I just put salt because Jake, who shovels and possibly plows, I'm not sure, we're not sure. But he does, you know, salt the sidewalks and he asked me the other, because we have salt here, but obviously we're not open.
Right.
We can't get in, so I guess in the past he's bought a lot of salt, charged it to us, carries it around in his truck.
Okay.
Are we still okay with that or do you do you want to provide it one bag at a time? Do we want to store it someplace where he can get to it outside? So he doesn't.
Well, if we had some kind of shelter to have a bed worth, it might be good. Where, you know, self-serve service in situation, you know, someone finds a slippery area and they can.
Exactly.
A lab does it all the time. They actually just, they have covered garbage cans. Well, plastic. But but with a, you know, a cord over the top.
Yeah, if we had a, we had a container. When I ordered the salt for the road, we ordered a little extra.
Well.
For the container. It's, it would be no big thing. Say if I needed 120 ton, I'd order for 122 ton. And then we'd have extra salt put up.
Right, but one thought there is.
Well.
It's mixed with sand.
It's mixed with sand. You want straight salt.
But, but.
It's not gonna hurt in any out here in the walkway.
One thought is, do we want, you know, calcium chloride or the, the.
Rock salt.
Well, the, well, rock salt is the best, but it also kills grass some. So it's, you know, the bags that we got here, I got in Walmart, which is doesn't work as well as rock salt, but it's softer on, not as hard on the, on salt in the earth, so to speak.
Oh, yeah, there's still, I gave him a bag.
Good, yeah.
But there's still one there for us to use here.
So that's a decision to be made as far as.
So the question is, yeah, so we like the idea of having some sort of container outside and or him or whoever.
Like the container that we were looking at.
Where would we hide it?
Oh, right.
Yeah.
But that was, so they have a small one like that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look into it. Sure, so what Joey's talking about is, you know, currently we have, you know, Josh will take a loader worth of salted sand and put it outside salt sand shed for people to take bucket worth of sand for the driveway. But it's not a real good way of doing it because with rain and so forth. So I was looking in into, you know, some kind of large container situation where we can put the salted sand in and it will be protected from the weather that people can come and then we'll have, you know, wet sand to deal with and that's less usable. But when I was searching for that, and I should bring that up again next time, I found some smaller bins that, you know, one could be good here. So as opposed to a, I mean, a garbage can's a cheap option. But, you know, this is more of, has a flap in a bin that you open it up and you can get stuff out easier as opposed to going deep into it. But anyway, yeah, I think it'd be good to have that outside.
You were saying why not, why not salt mixed with sand?
Yeah, why not?
Because we would track more sand in when they.
Well.
It would be a real maintenance problem on the inside.
The thing is, with sand and salt, you put it on your walkway, it's great extraction. But the more sand you put on, the more you're insulating, the refreeze. Because you got the ice on the walkway melts, water runs off, gets cold, refreezes. Put some more sand on, pretty soon you'll layer in the ice and use the sand for insulation. That's when state stops with the same soil on and with straight salt.
The salt, but but we can, we can get the was it potassium chloride?
All right, I leave that in your good hands.
Okay.
Thank you. And almost last, I just put annual town report because I hate last minute decisions. I'm not good, I don't like emergencies, I don't like surprises, and I don't like last minute. And the way I feel, June is right around the corner. I, it's just.
Well.
So I want to, I want to stay ahead of this and thinking of, I mean, the budget committee will be working soon and all the big numbers and stuff, but I'm just thinking about things like the cover. Could we have like a photo contest or something for the cover? And how about the dedications? Who decides who the dedications would go, and stuff like that?
Great.
I just want to stay ahead of it.
That's exactly the obsession. Who decides who's on the cover?
Or who gets dedicated?
Sure, definitely.
All right, so we could get that in a newsletter. You know, photo, or how do we choose the winner? I don't know.
Well, it might be slightly correct to just do like a lottery drawing.
Or take the 10, or yeah, okay. Well, I, you know, over the years, we had some beautiful covers. I think it's just wonderful.
Or they get submitted to the town office and Dwayne can pick and choose.
Anyway, all right, so, thank you. So let's start now. Put it out to everybody, anybody who wants to made a possible cover, send it to the town office. You will get bragging rights, right? That's what the prize is.
Well, get, get the, on the inside cover, we can say, you know, picture courtesy of.
Can't pay for it, but we will acknowledge you. All right then, unless.
We have public comments.
Yeah, that's where we're there, public comments on the agenda.
Two quick things.
Sure.
The company that did the cutting back of the snow, you know, along that stuff, did an excellent, excellent job. And I walk the Britton Road every day and they did a great job of cutting. But one of the things that they, they just blew the stuff out of the road with, you know, just one of those leaf clover, that kind of stuff. And what's happened is the drainage ditches are full of brush, which may lead to a problem for draining if we get a heavy snow.
The initial plan, man, Clay, was you came in, done that. We'd come back in with an excavator and ditch and clean, clean the ditch up. It may be postponed a little bit with all, with Mother Nature.
That's certainly gonna happen.
But that is the plan.
Okay.
Is anywhere that they cut.
Okay.
The only place, I will tell you this, right there, mouth of your driveway.
Yeah.
We're gonna clean that cover though.
Yeah.
But they're good to be fixing the signs and stuff like that along that road, so I'm all for that. Okay, no other problems.
The other thing, number two, is you have a ballot box out back that does not have a camera on it. You may want to think about that. Because I think it's getting to the point where you, your ballot box.
It's not, it's a lock box.
It's a lock box, yes, but who's putting it in and how many? Seems to be the question circulating a lot around.
Doesn't really matter because the certification process. The certification process would call out repeated entries.
Let me ask you this. Now, I know we have a paper ballot and that's the way to go, and I'm all for that. Now, think about this. The paper ballot goes where? Where do you turn your paper ballots into?
Into ballot?
No. Into where? Where do they go from here?
Is this, are you talking about like absentee ballots?
Well, no, well, absentee or just all the paper ballot. Do you store all of those right here?
Yeah, they're in. Yeah, they're in the.
They're in a lock box.
But your results, your results, where do they go?
The results go straight to the state.
Straight to the state. And guess where they are? They're in a computer. And if you go around with a lot of things going on in a lot of states in the country right now, they're finding a lot of voter fraud based on computer hacking. And it's not necessarily Democrat or Republican. I'm sure it goes both ways.
But what does this have to do with needing a camera on, on a?
Well, that's what a lot of places are doing. If they have a ballot box, they're putting a camera there so they know who's coming. I mean, let's say if the same person came five times and put ballots in the box, wouldn't it be suspicious?
It would be disqualified.
I know it would be disqualified here.
And, and it doesn't go any further. It would just get destroyed. It would not, it would, it would not contribute to the numbers at all because it would never make it beyond this, this office.
Maybe you could describe the process because each one has logged in.
You have to certify every single one.
I do, and they have changed the whole voting system this year. So everyone has a barcode. So if I, you have to come in and you have to request, or online, you can request a ballot. So before the day of the voting. So all your information is there. You can only, when they come to the office, we don't open them, but everything's on the outside of them.
Okay.
On the, who, who did it and everything. I have to certify them. We're lucky because.
We are.
We can, you know, it's not 10,000 people.
Right.
So we can be very diligent on it. They are, the state is extremely diligent. We have to, when the absentee ballots come in, I have to put, when they go out, I have to send information to the state saying this is who did it, this is the date, how they pick it up, did I mail it? And then when it comes back, I have to go back into the computer individually and say, yes, this is how it came back. They handed it to me. They voted here, they, you know, and then. So then we have a list of all the voters and then each one is individually, when you come in to vote is marked, when the absentee ballots are not open until after voting is closed and they're all marked. So it's very meticulous.
I know that we're all, we're probably all sat here. I'm not so worried about that. But what I am finding out that there's a lot of places here in Maine and along in the country where hundreds and sometimes thousands of votes are being hacked. And if you don't believe me, I suggest you visit Dr. Frank's website. And he has the information on every county in the United States of America and where their votes go and how they get there.
Okay, thank, this can be continued anytime, but right now I can move on.
I'll be back.
Thank you. I have motion to adjourn.
Second to the road. So. Okay, so let's.